Or they said, yeah. And clearly state your name, the spelling, and what your concern is.
My name is Mike Starmer. I'm a Missoula resident. I came here tonight to share some additional clinical data with you from the last time I was here. Last time, we talked about the severity of illness in children and its low potential. In addition to that, it's reduced potential for death, in fact, in Missoula. And in fact, in the entire state of Montana to date, not a single child has died over the last 22 months from COVID. That is unlike a recent event, which a 13-year-old boy goes to school here in Missoula. Fortunately for you, I'm not at the public school system, passed away from a blood clot within 24 hours after he was vaccinated. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the current data that's out there. I downloaded this off of the DPHHS website. This discusses masks and COVID in school systems. In Missoula, right now, according to this study or this report, 10 students and staff have COVID in the Missoula system. Not too bad. In Bozeman, there are 17 students and staff that have COVID. Both of those sites have mask mandates. In Kalispell, where there's a no-mask mandate, four students and staff have COVID. And in Hamilton, where there is a no-mask mandate, five students and staff have COVID. That can be downloaded off the website, DPHHS. As far as hospitals are concerned, in Missoula, both Community and St. Patrick's have a total of 50 patients with COVID in the hospitals at this time. Contrast that to Bozeman, where 26 patients are in the hospital. If you look at some of the most recent data that's coming out, a study from California and one from Tufts University and Harvard University in Massachusetts, full 50% of the patients that they identified as COVID patients in the hospitals were there unnecessarily. Let's look at some of the repercussions of vaccines. New study that is currently under peer review, out of California, states that young adolescent males between the ages of 12 and 17 stand a four to six times greater risk of being hospitalized for myocarditis, heart inflammation, than for COVID-19. Amazing. We often don't look at the long-term implications of these things, but here's a study published in 2013. This was looking at children over a 30-year period. Average term was about seven years. It shows that for those children with severe myocarditis, there's a 50% mortality rate.
Thank you, Mr. Starmer.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Could we have the next public commenter, please?
Do you need me to state my name for you all?
Yes, please. And spell it, please.
Clinton Nunnally, N-U-N-N-A-L-L-Y. I'm really just here to express my displeasure around the rules, protocol, procedures that you guys have set in place involving coronavirus. None of us as parents asked you guys to make decisions on behalf of us for our children regarding their health. You are not public health officials, so please stop acting like it and get back to focusing on your actual duties as public educators. The COVID-19 mitigation team needs to be completely dissolved, so those teachers can go back to focusing on educating. Your quarantine protocol needs to be completely ended, because its actual result is that a lot of healthy kids are being told that they can't come to school. Because they sat at the same table as a kid who got tested for COVID and came up positive. Doesn't seem fair. Any social distancing rules that are in place need to stop immediately, considering that we now know that that recommendation was completely arbitrary, and no one has any proof that six feet did anything at all. And finally, the members of this board that voted to institute a frankly tyrannical, unscientific, and nonsensical mask mandate need to reverse course. Kids are not dying of COVID-19, and teachers can choose to be vaccinated. We're done here. COVID-19 is no longer your guys' concern. It's no longer a public health concern. We need to move on. My wife and I, along with our children, are fully capable of making our own risk assessment decisions around this disease. I don't need you doing it for us. This is most applicable to the mask issue. How you as educators can in good conscience choose to disrupt a children's development by stifling their ability to communicate interpersonally with their peers and teachers is beyond me. Not to mention the distress and outright discrimination against the children in this district who have disabilities. Making a child that has autism wear a muzzle is patently abusive. On my street is a little boy who's severely hearing impaired and mainly communicates by reading lips. Making your onerous mask mandate completely exclusionary to that student, not to mention how isolated he must feel at school, considering he can't communicate the best way he knows possible as a deaf person. I've asked multiple teachers in this district if they were even consulted by anyone on this board about how they felt about the mask mandate, to receive a resounding no from every one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Nunnally. Those are your three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public commenters? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move on to correspondence, which is in your packet beginning on page eight, the written correspondence. That's item 5B on the agenda. Item 6 on the agenda, 6A, our announcements from the superintendent. Superintendent Rob Watson will report on items of interest to the board.
All right. Thank you, trustees. We've got school board visits coming up. I think Tracy's been communicating with all of you about those visits. Got visits coming up as early as October 11th. For some of the days, we're trying to put at least three schools in the mix. And please feel free to attend as many as you can. It does help us to get an accurate count, though, so we can just let the principal know ahead of time how many board members might be there. So appreciate that. The other thing I was going to, let's see if I can share my screen here, maybe. Oops. I think I logged out of Zoom. I for some reason, I just logged myself out of Zoom. I was going to share with you some of the COVID updates from the district. We've got this posted on our website. We have this split into school-based metrics and county-based metrics. I'll just run through a few of these, just so the board is aware. I also put a copy of these on your chair there. So the incident rate in the county as of last Friday was 92. Remember, the incident rate is the number of new cases per 100,000. Test positivity, 12.67 as of last Friday in the county. And then we've also been reporting to the board routinely since last spring, the vaccination rates. Currently, 15- to 19-year-old vaccination rates, 62% with at least one dose. 12- to 14-year-olds, 44%. And then, of course, under 12 is 0%. The number of new cases last week for the school district was 35 new cases. Just a reminder, the previous week was 51 new cases. We're on track this week, probably to hit that 40 to 50 mark, just in terms of number of new cases. There are lots of folks getting tested by the district. They're accessing our testing services. In addition, lots of parents are calling in to report that they've done a home test and they've got, you know, they came up positive on their home test. So that's been very encouraging that folks are still reporting to us, reporting the numbers. Also wanted to just, the other metric that we often watch is the number of active cases in the county compared to the active cases per 10,000. We use the number 10,000 because it's approximately the number of people in our district. So last Friday, we had 34 active cases in all of our schools combined. And when you compare that to the county, there was 118 per 10,000 in the county. So lots of COVID cases in the county right now. And we're, have also lots in the district, but not anywhere near the number per 10,000. And then the last thing I would report is close contacts. Close contacts, last Friday, we had 172 students or staff out as close contacts. It's about 1.6% of our total population. The previous week, we had just over 200. I think it was 201. So those are some of the numbers we've been watching. COVID Task Force met yesterday. We'll meet again one more time before the next board meeting. And so that, at the next board meeting, I would anticipate we'll be prepared to talk about some of the mitigation strategies and further recommendations based on the COVID Task Force. That is my update for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Watson. Agenda item 7 is old business, and our first under the heading of personnel negotiation and policies is to approve the second reading of new board policy 3120 compulsory attendance. Dr. Watson?
Yeah, so I would just remind the board that this was sort of a cleanup policy. If you take a look at our cleanup based on other changes, so if you look on page 21 of your packet, you will note that one of the things we cleaned up was the language in there about full-time versus part-time. When we created the part-time policy, it required us to go back and look at some of our other policies. And wherever we talked about full-time or part-time, we just struck that out. And then we referred folks to our new policy, which is our part-time attendance policy. So that was the basic change of that policy, that 3120, and there were no public comment on that.
Okay, so are there any board questions for Dr. Watson? So this is the second reading of this policy, and the administration recommends that trustees adopt revised board policy 3120 on compulsory attendance. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Oldperson, second by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion on the motion? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on the motion to approve the revised board policy? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of approving the revised board policy, please signify by raising their hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. The second item under this is in the heading of teaching and learning. Or is it going to approve for second reading the MCPS strategic plan? And Dr. Watson will present that, and it's in your packet on page 23.
Okay, so just a reminder that this has been through several iterations. I think the board spent a good amount of time looking at the core ideology, which includes your core purpose and your core values. The other thing that I think was important for the board, just to remember on this, is that if you take a look at page 26, you can see the four goal areas that are outlined. These become critically important, because these will drive the strategies and the strategic objectives and the action plans. And if you'll permit me, I'm just going to walk you through a little bit of this, just so that and hopefully, I know that's really small up on the screen, but I also put a copy of this at your table. And I think it's helpful just to kind of, if you'll allow me to do it, just kind of explain where we're at and where we're going. Because the process is pretty well outlined, but we're about halfway through the process. And I just want to make sure that folks understand where we're at. So if you look at that first, this first part here, basically what happens is you all, through the help of the School Boards Association, you know, you developed a core purpose and core values. We developed a goal area, so those first two parts are done. And those sort of follow each other. So the goal areas came, they sort of came out of the core purpose and the core values. The next step is the strategic objectives, and that's a pretty important step that has not been done yet. And I'm going to talk briefly on how we're going to do that. Once we have strategic objectives, then we can really start focusing on action plans. And so what I thought would be helpful is if I walked you through an example to kind of show you from start to finish, because right now, it seems pretty abstract, I guess is the best way to say it. So I want to show you how we get from the abstract to the concrete. So a couple of things as far as timelines go. The core purpose and the core values, those should really stand the test of time. We hope that they would be the same essential core ideology, you know, for future, for many, many years into the future. The goals, the four goals that you identified, those could change. But generally, in my experience, it's, you know, they're usually good for five to 10 years, and then they might change slightly, or you might add a goal or subtract a goal. So the goal areas also are kind of longstanding. The strategic objectives are something that change probably every three years. And the reason that is because you, as you complete specific objectives, they sort of fall off, and then you might come up with new strategic objectives. So the strategic objectives are a little bit more fluid. And then the action plans are developed to achieve the strategic objectives, and those change yearly. So you can imagine that that's something that's ongoing. All right, so here's my brief example for you, and I hope this really helps you pull it from the abstract to the concrete. So I pulled a piece out of your core purpose, is to engage all students in high-quality education. That's something we all agree on, is a purpose of our district. I pulled out a value statement as well, and the one I chose was student-centered. You see, there's like six different value statements, but I wanted to use this one because it helps illustrate my example. So under one of our core values, we believe that we should be student-centered. We value an environment where each student is engaged, inspired, and challenged every day. So then you go to that page 26, which has your goal areas. And take a look at goal area number one, enhanced learning opportunity. And you can kind of see where these flow together. You can see how the goal area one was actually built by the previous two items. So your core purpose and your core values sorts of sets the direction. In your goal area one, each student has access to enhanced opportunities that will lead to individual student success. That really kind of flows from your core purpose and your core values. So the next step would be a strategic objective. And so I'm just giving you one example. You might have, for each goal area, we may have three to five strategic objectives. And this is some of the work we're going to have to do over the next few months. But here's an example of a strategic objective. Our schools offer comprehensive programs to meet the academic and social-emotional needs of our students. Now, you won't see that written anywhere. That's just an example I threw out there, because it helps us meet that goal area one. If we can achieve that objective, that's going to help us succeed in goal area number one. So that's an example. And then from that objective, we can come up with specific initiatives and specific action plans. So the one I'm going to show you is a review of the middle school model, our middle school philosophy. And I believe if we can do that, we're going to be meeting that strategic objective regarding comprehensive programs. So the other item that I left on your table there was an example action plan. And again, this is just an example. It's not necessarily what the end product's going to look like, but I do think that this helps bring this, sort of these abstract ideas into more reality. So here's an example of an action plan process that I have found really effective in the past. This is, this helps us describe the actual work of the district. So, you know, your core purpose and your core values sort of live up here at the 60,000-foot level. This really helps us describe the work of the school district and how we're going to meet those core purpose and core values. So let's go back just to remind you, goal area number one, enhanced learning opportunities. One, strategic objective 1.1, that we're going to offer a comprehensive program to meet the academic needs, academic and social-emotional needs of our students. So this is how this works. We would identify, if this were going to be an initiative for us, we would identify a lead, probably somebody from our central office team to be the lead. And then we would have a team of stakeholders, both parents and students and teachers, obviously, and administrators. And this particular initiative is around the middle school model. This is something that we actually were talking about last spring. In the middle of COVID protocol last spring, our teachers started talking about the school schedule and how they kind of liked the block schedule and what we could do to keep pieces and parts of that into the next school year. So we were actually talking about some of the middle school model last spring. So what this example shows you is how we take a fairly abstract concept and how we're going to actually achieve that objective is to review, this is just one example, review the middle school model, review the philosophy. And this second box here kind of gives you a little bit more about what our intended outcomes are by doing this. And some of these statements came from your strategic plan, from the envisioned future, but really, these are sort of the outcomes of what we hope to accomplish by doing this. And then what you can see down here are specific strategies and actions that we're going to do throughout the school year to sort of meet the strategic objective. So now you've got a fairly abstract concept, which is around, you know, enhanced learning opportunities. And now we've made it really much more specific. What we're going to do is take a look at our middle school program and our middle school philosophy and make sure that we're doing everything we can to address the needs of those adolescent learners. So I show you this because this is really the next steps of the strategic plan. This is where really the meat and potatoes are, because this is where our schools, our administrators, our teachers, our parents are really going to have to get involved to develop these sorts of plans. And then it will give you, as a board, an opportunity to see how the work of the district ties to your strategic plan. The last thing I would say is that obviously, none of this is done in a vacuum. I did this example on my own, but I would never do that on my own. I would develop this with a team of folks, working on this together. And then these things are reportable back out to the board. So we're going to report on these at the start of the year. We're going to share what our action plans are at the start of the year, and then we report to the board at the end of the year as to how we did on those action plans. I also would encourage the board to consider a subcommittee that would continue to work on the strategic plan and continue to be involved in some of these steps. That will help make sure that our actions and our strategies are still in line with what your hopes were for the core purpose and the core value. Again, I'm just giving you this as an example of how we take your abstract pieces and sort of make them a little bit more concrete, make them into something that we can work on. I really do describe this as the work of the district. So everything that you might think about that becomes a big initiative for the district will fit in one of these action plans.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Are there any board trustee questions for Dr. Watson, trustee Oldperson?
Thank you, Dr. Watson. I have a quick question. So doing this type of action plan would bring up two things, like if we needed another middle school in that way, because we have to complete the elementary boundary study, which will lead into a middle school boundary. And then the second thing is seeing the social-emotional needs of our students. For example, maybe a school that doesn't have a dedicated lunchroom, so something along that.
Yeah, so there are so many things that came up last year with regards to middle schools. And I think what this sort of planning does is it really helps us look at the model itself and decide, are we meeting the needs of our students, both academically and socially emotionally? The reason it's important to have this in writing is because as we make decisions about resources or programs, we really need to make those decisions with sort of that middle school philosophy in the background. So these sorts of things can really help drive your resources and your structure, your school structures.
Trustee Decker?
Thanks, Dr. Watson. And, you know, I'll just, I'll say again how excited I am about where this has landed for moving forward. I will say this next step of kind of moving from the vision to the concrete, that's obviously where the rubber hits the road and where decisions start to be made at the classroom and school and district level about how we do things. And I just, my hope would be that we would see language pulled directly from these vivid descriptions, because that came out of those community conversations. So like if something shows up in the envisioned future on this action plan, it should tie directly to something that shows up over here. And I see that some of this does, but some of it is coming from like expertise about middle schools. And that translation is going to be really important of like bringing this language about what we've already said enhanced learning opportunities means in the kind of community vision. It should be pretty clear how that maps. That's obviously a complex process, and I know this is just an example. But that's just kind of my feedback, would be the closer we stick to the language that we've put the work into developing, as that ends up showing up in place after place after place, the more people will think of this as a living thing and not just something we did in 2021.
Any other trustee comments or questions? Trustee Vogel, do you have any questions or comments? I can't see her.
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none, the recommendation from the administration. The administration recommends that trustees adopt the final draft of the strategic plan and task administration to move forward with the development of the high-priority strategies under the four goal areas and draft associated action plans with timelines. So do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee Wake. Is there any board discussion on the motion? Trustee Oldperson?
I agree with trustee Decker in saying I'm really excited for the strategic planning and where we're at. And I also just want to thank Deborah Silk from the Montana School Board Association for all the work she did with us. And also the other trustees who sat on the ad hoc committee we did, just to go through the language more. So just wanted to thank you guys for all the work we're putting towards this.
Any other trustee comments? Seeing none, are there any public comments on the motion? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the final draft of the strategic plan. All trustees in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Our next agenda item under new business is under finance, operations, and maintenance, and it's regarding the DPHHS epidemiology and laboratory capacity grant. So, Mr. McHugh?
Yeah, thank you. So we're applying for this grant, or we submitted an application for this grant on behalf of the elementary district and the high school district. And the main focus of the grant is to expand testing and screening opportunities in the schools, including specifically asymptomatic screening, with the idea that it would minimize quarantine and minimize the spread of the disease. So the, page 29 outlines in more detail some of the scope of the grant itself, but heavily focused on screening and testing, using the binax now antigen for that screening purposes. This would be used with, could be used with staff and students. Happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Walker, I'm sorry, Walker Andrews?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I don't know enough about the different kinds of tests. How
How fast is this particular one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know the specific speed, but this is one of the quicker tests. And it's, it's, it's also a test that isn't as invasive up the nose as some of the other tests have been. So it's more of the new model of tests that's available out there and, and, and has been in use by school districts. And I believe by our school district for, for at least the last, since the start of the school year.
Trustee Oldperson?
Thank you, Chair Lorenzen. How competitive is this grant and will this impact any of the ESTR funds that we have used towards testing?
Yeah, good question. So this, this grant is not a competitive grant. The funds are actually available to any public or private school that applies. So as long as we apply by the 30th and submit, answer a few questions and represent that we would be doing asymptomatic testing and screening, then, then the grant is available for each district of our size up to $45,000. So the funding would likely happen with board approval within the next three weeks through, through DPHHS.
Trustee Havens, you're good. Are there any other trustee questions? And trustee Decker?
Just, does this support staff to be able to have more capacity to do testing? Does it support the tests themselves and the lab work and that sort of thing? So that it's continued at no cost to families and all that stuff?
It does. The, the materials, the test, the binax now is all free with the program. What the budget would support is, is a variety of things, but it would include PPNE for those administering the test. It could help pay for additional nursing and other staff that would, that would also do the testing. It could pay for supplies and also technology for tracking data. So how Brooke Creninger, our nursing supervisor, put the, the budget together is primarily was allocated among salaries, which could be for contracted services, PPNE and then supplies and technology, computer services and support. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Any other trustee questions? Seeing none, the administration recommends that trustees approve the ELC grant application summary. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Oldperson? Do we have any board discussion on the motion? Seeing none, do we have public comment on the motion?
I have three questions for the trustees. Regarding this grant, does the grant mandate that testing will take place with all students in the school district? Second, will you ask parents for their consent prior to testing their child? And third, will you provide a parent with an opt out notice allowing them to, in writing, specify to you that they do not allow the school district to test their child? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The, the information is available in the board packet, which are available there at Tracy's desk. So I think you could find the answers to those questions. The board's not actually allowed to interact with public commenters, but thank you for your comments. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising their hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Our next item of new business is under personnel negotiations and policy. And it is the first reading of revision of board policy 2410, the graduation requirements. Dr. Watson?
Okay, thank you, everyone. This starts on, let's see, page 30 of your packet. And a couple of things that I just want to mention before we get started in this discussion. First of all, you know, it's a process of the board to approve policy and any changes to policy, which is why this is an important topic this evening. On page 32, I included the procedure. So this is starting on page 32 is our, is our actual, it would be labeled as 2410P for procedure. While the procedure is not necessarily approved by the board, I do think it's important just because of the topic and because of the significant changes to the procedure. I felt it was important that the board had a chance to see the procedure and that's why I included it in the packet. But the actual administrative recommendation is just for the policy itself, 2410, which is on page 30 and 31. The reason that we're bringing this to you this evening is there was a, there was a change regarding graduation requirements made in the legislative session last spring. You will recall, we had a brief discussion about this, I think in the May board meeting, if I remember correctly. And at that point in time, the, the new state law basically said that, that the, that the school district had to offer a diploma option for any student that had experienced a qualified educational disruption. And so, and that's just for any district that was requiring more than the state standard, which is 20 credits. So the state of Montana requires 20 credits in specific areas. Missoula County Public Schools requires 24 credits. So for those districts like ours that are offering more, are requiring more than 20 credits, we had to have an option for any student that experienced an educational disruption. So on page 30, the major changes here to this policy is we just added a, an extra line in there that, that says that the superintendent shall develop procedures for implementing this policy, which include item number four, providing a diploma option for those students who have a qualified, who have experienced a qualified educational disruption. So that was the recommendation from the school boards association. There wasn't a whole lot of changes to the policy itself. They did recommend some significant changes to the procedure. And so that's what I'm going to talk about next. But before I do that, any questions on the policy changes? All right, so let's jump into the procedure, which starts on page 32. Part, part of the reason that procedures are approved at the administrative level is because procedures can change very rapidly. Just since the short time that I've been with the school district, we have probably changed this procedures two or three times. This might be the third time we've changed the procedure. And that's because there's a lot of stuff in here that changes fairly quickly and new, new opportunities for students or places in our language that aren't clear enough, loopholes that have to be closed, those sorts of things. So I would just remind folks that anywhere where there's a bolded type is where we've made a, the most recent change to the procedure. And you'll see two of them right away under this graduation requirement. You see where it says or equivalent social studies course. And the next one says or equivalent integrated science course. We put those in there because while we require those subjects at every school, they're not all labeled the same. So for example, at Hellgate High School, you're going to take earth science and biology. But at Big Sky High School, you're going to take integrated science one and integrated science two. And the subject is the same, you're still going to get earth science and biology. It's just integrated over two years. So if somebody were reading this to the letter of the law, they would say, well, you didn't meet the graduation requirements because you didn't do earth, space and science or biology. But now we've added this or equivalent integrated science, which is what we offer at Big Sky as an integrated science approach. So we're just trying to be flexible there and make sure we're recognizing all the different things that are going on at our schools. On page 33, we wanted to clarify this particular option because it was being done slightly different at every one of our schools. So look about halfway down the page, credit recovery and retakes, courses that are retaken. So first of all, all grades that are earned, including failures and retakes shall be recorded on the transcript. But for retake courses, the highest grade earned will be used in the calculation of the GPA and the class rank. So what that means is if I failed my algebra one course as a freshman and then I retook it as a sophomore, that F would stay on my transcript because the transcript is an official record of what happened that my freshman year. But when I retook the class and let's say I retook the class and I got a B in it, then that B would be used in the GPA calculation. So that seemed to be, in talking to several stakeholders in our schools, that seemed to be the most acceptable, how, how most people were doing it. Part of the reason this is so critical to get this stuff in writing is so that no matter what school you're at, there's some consistency on how things are done. So that's been my goal all along is to make sure we have some of these procedures specified and, and so we can have some consistency across the high schools. The pass fail grades, that's a new one. We didn't have that one. And quite honestly, this is somewhat of a product of COVID. If you remember in 2020, when we went into shutdown and, and the kids didn't come to school at all, we, we offered a pass fail for a lot of our courses. And so now we've got to make sure we understand how that pass fail is going to be calculated in the GPA. So if it's a pass, you're going to get credit for the class, but it's not going to be counted in the GPA because there's no way to calculate a pass in a GPA. If it's a fail, you're not going to get credit for the class, but the F will be calculated in the GPA. So that's just specifies how, how we're doing that. There's a piece in there about transfer credits, not a huge change. That was actually in a different policy. There's language, brand new language about dual credits because there was no language in the original procedure about dual credit. This is stuff we've already been doing. We offer dual credit currently, and so this just specifies what we're kind of already doing. The next section is all in bold because this one has changed quite a few times over the last year or so. And this is for credits for high school courses taken before the ninth grade. Doesn't happen a lot, but we do have some students that take credits before the ninth grade. The old, the old process and procedure is that we would only count it if they actually did it at the high school. And that seemed a little bit unfair because not all of our kids have that availability to walk to the high school or get a ride to the high school to take the class. So we kind of took that language out. Doesn't matter where they do the course, as long as it's the same standards as the high school course, we're going to give them credit for the class. The one thing that I think is a little bit hard for folks to understand in this particular section is that we, we don't necessarily want them to stop taking classes once they get to the high school. So if they, if they end up doing something in eighth grade, we still want to give them credit for it, but it doesn't necessarily count as one of their graduation required classes. So best example I can give you is math. If I was ready to take geometry in the eighth grade, I could do that if, either an online course or through the online academy or maybe through the high school, I could take the geometry class. But when I get to the high school, we want that student to continue to take three credits of math. We don't want them to stop taking math. So we're going to give them elective credit for that eighth grade course. And then once they get to the high school, they're still going to have to do three credits of math. That's kind of how that is written so that we don't have any students that are taking it just, just to stop math. I mean, I think probably the worst thing you could do is stop math after the 10th grade. We really want to encourage kids to take math at least through the 11th grade. Early graduation, that was already, already happening. We just clarified what students needed to do if they were interested in early graduation. The last section is probably the most important thing this evening that you all get your eyes on, and that's the special circumstances diploma. And so this would be a diploma for any student that experienced a qualified educational disruption. The vast majority of this language came from the school boards association. So it's what they thought was probably the best way to word this. I added a few things just as some things that were specific to Missoula, but overall it's, it's definitely been looked at, at least by the school boards association. So first of all, the first paragraph just clarifies, you know, what's already in state law. It says that the district, the last sentence, the district may distinguish the diploma in a reasonable manner from the standard diploma issued under this policy. The next paragraph on top of page 35, probably what's important here is the definition of an educational disruption. Some of this came out of state law, some of this came from the school boards association. So an educational disruption means a disruption experienced during the grades nine through 12, caused by homelessness, involvement in the child welfare system, juvenile justice system, medical or mental health crisis, or another event considered a qualifying educational disruption by the district. That language, most of that language came right out of state law. And so I think the school boards association added the nine through 12, but I'd have to go back to the state law just to verify that. So basically, as you can imagine, that's pretty broad. And so we're going to have to give some clarity to our principles. We'll have to come up with a process for this whereby a student and a parent would apply for this opportunity. The next paragraph, we wanted to put some boundaries on this. And so the next paragraph was some boundaries that, that we applied. So first of all, we said that they had to wait till their junior or senior year before they applied for it. Part of the reason we said that is we didn't want them applying in the ninth grade and then just, you know, getting, only getting to 20 credits and then not finishing. So we really wanted them to wait till their junior or senior year. And by then they'll know if they're behind in credits. If they're behind in credits in their ninth grade year because of an educational disruption, there's still time to catch up to get to 24. So that's why we put that in their junior or senior year. We also said if you're seeking early graduation status, you're not eligible for a special circumstances diploma. I mean, you shouldn't use a special circumstances diploma just to graduate early is basically what that sentence is saying. Final approval of this option would be made by the administration. We would, obviously appeals can be made through our, our board process, board policy 1700. And then probably the, the one thing I just wanted to point out to you all is we're not going to differentiate the diplomas. The actual physical diploma that they receive at graduation will still be an MCPS diploma. The place that we're going to differentiate this would be on their transcript, their official transcript. So for students who qualify for the special circumstances diploma, the official transcript shall reflect that the student has met the minimum high school credit requirement for graduation as established by the administrative rules of the Board of Public Ed. So that's, that's basically saying that, that if they meet the 20 credits and they qualify for the special circumstances diploma option, that we're going to reflect that on their transcript, that they met the 20 credits, not the 24 credits. And then the last thing I put in there is the actual 20 credit requirement by the state. You can see that it's much less specific. So for example, it just says two years of science, two units of science. It doesn't say which science that has to be, says two units of math. It doesn't say which math it has to be. So the, the state requirements are much, I guess, not as specific as our graduation requirements. So I think that's a lot for you to digest. I apologize. I do know that there's more work to be done on the procedure. We started discussions with some of our, our high school staff. We haven't finished that, so this procedure is still in draft. It'll probably, a few more discussions over the next few weeks and then we'll, we'll post that as official procedure after the policy gets, after the policy goes through the second reading. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. I will take board questions and I have the first one since we were just there. It says that the state requirement is two units of social studies, but it doesn't specifically say you have to have a unit of government. I thought it always was required to have a year of government.
Not in the state standards. In our, in our district standards, they do require that, but not in the state standards.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Walker Andrews?
Yeah, mine's really just a grammatical thing. I noticed that they say units, we say credits and probably somewhere we should say whether they're the same, that's all.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Yeah, I copied those right out of the, you see there, it says 1055, 905. That's administrative rules in Montana. So I just copied it straight out of the state rules, but we probably should put that in there, that a unit is the same thing as a credit. That's a good, that's a good catch.
Is there a question, trustee Mercer?
Bordering on a comment. The bill, as I read it, says an educational disruption means a disruption experienced during grades nine through 12 caused by homelessness, blah, 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 blah. Or another event considered a qualifying educational disruption by the trustees of the district. I think that means you need to put the definition. I think that means you need to put the definition in the policy and specify what your other things are. I, so I think that's a legal reason that might be a requirement. I also, I guess, would vote for it as a matter of good governance, because that is the fundamental operative thing. And right now, it fundamentally just says it's whatever we think it is, which isn't much of a definition. Unrelated comment, in the procedure, which is, I guess, not our bailiwick, but your example with math, so if you took math somehow in eighth grade or between eighth grade and ninth grade in the summer, but the ones that I've seen people do is take earth science. And this says it doesn't advance them, but it doesn't count as a credit, but earth science is a specific named credit, unlike math, which is just three credits of any type. So this would not let people get out of taking earth science in high school, as I understand the way it reads.
Yeah, we could clarify that. I think it actually does, because what it does is allow them to take a different class other than earth science. So it'd allow them, but we can clarify that. I understand what you're saying, trustee Mercer, and we'll clarify that.
Are there any other trustee questions or comments about the draft? Trustee Elperson?
Thank you, Chair Lorenzen. My comment is, I'm really happy to hear that we will not distinguish that it's a special circumstance diploma and just a diploma for the student, because I think that's really important, especially for those students who've experienced what we're talking about.
Thanks. Any other questions for the superintendent? I guess I have a question based on trustee Mercer's comment. Is that a very substantive item? Should we table this or move ahead?
I, I'm always all for putting it out for reading. I don't think that's disruptive, but I guess as it stands, I would personally vote against it, but I will vote for it on first reading to move it forward with the understanding that work needs to be done, as usual. That's my mushy answer for myself.
That actually makes sense to me. Trustee Decker?
I do maybe have a question, because it's kind of been like circling around in my head around this math question, having not been a four-years-of-math-in-high-school person myself. If a student were to take geometry ahead and then take three years of math, do we in fact have three to four more advanced courses on beyond geometry that students can take within MCPS, or will they probably be taking college courses? Are they probably one of those students that's going to be getting into the dual-credit thing at that point? Related is that we aren't talking about students graduating early by having had requirements completed before they come in, and yet we do have that policy about advancement and about that as a, like, our key strategy, really, around gifted students in the district. And so just, that's sort of circling around in my head.
Yeah, and I think, if I can clarify, I think they could graduate early. I mean, the special circumstances diploma was the one we said they couldn't graduate early. Yeah, but if they do an advancement and take a bunch of classes during the eighth grade, they could graduate early. That's completely possible. We do have enough math. In fact, we've got some kiddos that are actually doing Algebra II in the eighth grade, and we still feel like they've got enough math to at least get three credits in high school.
Any other trustee questions for Superintendent Watson? So the recommendation on our agenda. The administration recommends that the trustees approve the first reading of revised Board Policy 2410 graduation requirements and authorize posting for public comment. Administration will recommend that trustees approve the policy at the second reading, at the second board meeting in October. So do we have such a motion? Moved by trustee Walker Andrews, second by trustee Decker. Do we have any board discussion on the motion? Trustee Mercer?
I'm not sure I can articulate this, but the reason Missoula requires more is that we think more is better, right? And so we're saying if you've suffered certain circumstances, you don't need more. And I just want to be cautious with, that we should never use that as an excuse not to push people to do more if they can. I guess that's my comment.
Any other trustee, Decker?
I guess to echo that certainly the goal here is not to, like, encourage people to use difficult life circumstances as a reason for not achieving their potential. But if we look back at what we were just talking about in our strategic plan, we see lots and lots of language about being responsive to individual circumstances, about supporting student success, about engagement and inspiration. And if we are actually achieving that strategic plan, this becomes something that allows a student in MCPS essentially not to be penalized by being in MCPS, where in another district, they would in fact be able to get a high school diploma and move on with their peers in a way that they wouldn't here. It would be, it would be an unusual but necessary situation, in my opinion, if we are living up to our strategic plan goals.
Any other trustee comments? And I think, I agree with trustee Decker, either way, either diploma requires four years of English, and that is true of any school district. So if these kids want to pursue the state-only requirement, they still have to deal with any lost English credits. So it, in a way, that to me is always the stumbling block, is the four years of English in either situation. So our motion is to move this forward for public comment, and I think at that point, we could incorporate any board comments as well. So if the board could read this and get back to the superintendent with it, then we could look at public comment and board comment together. So any other board comment on the motion? Is there any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion to adopt for first reading revised Board Policy 2410 graduation requirements, please signify by raising their hand. And that is unanimous, as all trustees present. And next, we move on to new business, teaching and learning, and this is to approve the renewal of the DPHHS Pre-Employment Transition Services. Mr. McHugh?
All right, thank you. First, on the agenda, I'd just like to point out, this is a secondary item. It's funds that are available for the high schools, so it references the elementary, but should just be the high schools. This is a renewal of a service agreement with DPHHS, where funds are made available to our schools to enhance services for students with disabilities in the areas of pre-ETS, that's Pre-Employment Transition Services. The program is managed by Ginny Haynes, our Director of Special Education, and unlike many of our grants, this grant is funded based upon the number of qualifying students who participate in the five areas of pre-ETS. And so those five areas of pre-ETS are job exploration, counseling, work-based learning experiences, counseling on opportunities for enrollment in comprehensive transition or post-secondary education, workplace readiness training, instruction and self-advocacy. So as students participate in these services, or these areas, there's a calculation of $50 per student participating in each area. So that, that then limits the amount of funding that's available, but it works out to be about $18,000 that's available for each of our high schools, the three urban high schools. It's also available in Sealy, but at a smaller amount, but the rate in Sealy is higher. The rate in Sealy for reimbursement is $125 per student, per activity, per quarter. So in general, there's a cap with the district, our size, and the number of qualifying students of around $240,000. And the funds have been used in the past to support these services and to support a variety of other services for students with disabilities, including the transition boot camp that's available to high school sophomores, juniors, and seniors, which is offered during the June timeframe. Job skills training, where organizations come in to provide services and provide support for students and to provide lessons and skills, including resume writing, interview, interviewing, and that type of thing. There's building advocacy and leadership skill classes, vocational prep experiences, the cost of substitutes to transition pre-ETS committee quarterly meetings, so that's for students and for staff. So the funds are calculated in a way that's based upon student participation in these areas, and then the funds are expended in support of those areas, but also in addition to these, in addition to these other areas. And I think the program has been well utilized at all of the schools, including Willard and Sealy, to the extent it's available. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any trustee questions for Mr. McHugh? Okay, so this is a, it's a full-board item. The full board is the secondary board. So the recommendation, the administration recommends that trustees approve the renewal of the DPHHS pre-ETS services for another year. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee Hobbins. Is there any board discussion on the motion? trustee Decker?
This is one of those times where I miss having Mike on the board, because, sorry, this is a former trustee who had had experience in the district as a student with disabilities themselves, and I really valued his input always, but his enthusiasm for this particular project really stands out to me, and I remember how valuable he spoke of this as a service for kids who really needed this linkage between the schools and the workplace. So just wanted to bring him back into the room for a second and just say that I know he supported this project, and I enthusiastically do on his recommendation.
Thank you. Any other board comment on the motion? trustee McDonald?
That's funny, trustee Decker said it, because I was just going to say, this is for Michael.
Any other trustee questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the renewal of the pre-ETS services for another year, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous, as all trustees present. Next item is to approve renewal of the DPHHS Refugee Support Services Grant. Mr. McHugh?
I'll provide a little bit of lead-in, but Shirley Lindberg's here and can talk more in-depth about the program. Page 36 has the grant application summary, and one thing to point out is that the grant application date, it runs, it shows it running through September 30, 2021. That should be 2022. This is a continuation of grant funding in this area with a slight increase as compared to last year. I think last year, the grant was $75,000, so this is a $10,000 boost. The funds are utilized primarily to cover the costs of ELL tutors. These are tutors for our English-language learners, along with some additional support services. So without going into any more detail, Shirley, you want to provide any detail that's not
Hi, I am actually the overseeing Gifted Education and in the English Language Learner Program, and this is the third, fourth year we're receiving this grant money. The first year, we got $20,000, then $75,000, $75,000, and this year is $85,000, which I'm thrilled about. So we have two ELL tutors paid through this money. One of those tutors is also considered a navigator, so she does a lot of home visits, helping parents who are refugees understand how to be successful in the school system. So she will help with forms, she will help with communication, and she's like to go between the schools and the families. We also need money for in-district travel, because we, our tutors, have to travel to our schools where the refugees are. There's a very small amount for professional development and for supplies, because part of the money, we'd also like to add, so there's two tutors, but we'd like to add another tutor, and so far, we have the money for a half-time or four hours a day for the middle school and high school. So we're hoping that we can add to that and add another tutor for that. We also have had family engagement opportunities, so we had a picnic for two different years, where we bring all the families and staff together in one of the parks, and they bring their traditional cultural food, and we bring food and games, and everybody gets to know each other, and that's been a huge success. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we haven't been able to do that, but we hope to do it again next spring, and if not, next fall. Then another huge piece of it is, we have to pay for translation services. Our annual forms have to be translated. Communicating, as you can imagine, is absolutely necessary for school success, so we hire in-person translators. There are a few in town for the languages that we need. We also have a contract with Language Link, which we use as a third-party interpreter. We call them, they can call homes, and we can have conversations with the families, or we can use them on the phone while we're having a meeting. And then the last translation service we have is called Talking Points, and this is such a fantastic service, too, where we can send a text. Anybody in the school district can send a text in English. The family reads it in Arabic or Swahili or whatever language. They respond in their home language, but we read it in English. We can also send videos with closed captioning for, if it's translated. It's fantastic for being able to communicate with families, and we've used it a lot. So those are the areas where we put the money for, from DPHHS into our program. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Lindberg? trustee Decker?
Can you speak to how many students you're typically serving and how that's changed over the past couple of years?
Yeah, so our first family came five years ago, and at that time, we got 15 students that first year, and we gradually increased. Currently, our refugee population is 50, although the population of ELLs in our district is 127, I believe, my last count. But this money is specifically for refugee support. Since we don't qualify, because of our numbers, we don't qualify for specific refugee funds from the federal government, so we get the money from DPHHS as a go-between till we have the numbers.
trustee Walker Andrews?
My question was the number.
Okay. Any other trustee questions? trustee Mercer?
Can you keep going with the last part? What was the numbers with the feds and?
Well, so when you reach a certain threshold of refugees in your school district, usually, and it's kind of like a moving target, it's around 60 for two years in a row, and we have hit that, but not two years in a row, because many of our families decide to move on to another state. That money will kick in, but because that hasn't been able to kick in, because of our numbers, DPHHS instead funds us until that money is available, because our numbers have grown.
Any other trustee questions? Okay, seeing no additional questions from Ms. Lindberg, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the recommendation, the administration recommends that trustees approve the renewal of the Refugee Support Grants. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Mercer, second by trustee McDonald. Do we have any board discussion on the motion? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the renewal of the Refugee Support Grants, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, as all trustees present. Our final new business is to approve renewal of the DPHHS English Language Learner Support Service. Services Grant. Mr. McHugh?
Well, continuing our theme of DPHHS grants, this is the final one this evening, and this is for adult education. And this is a grant that provides funds in the adult education world for adult English language learners, and you can see the description that's outlined in page thirty-seven of the grant application summary. And this is also an elementary and high school grant, as the funds do support both areas, the high school or the secondary side of adult education, as well as the elementary side of the support system. I'm not sure if Amy had anything to add. Okay. Happy to answer any questions if there are.
Are there any trustee questions? Because I have a question, where does this take place? Does it take place at the Adult Learning Center?
Some of it does, but not all of it. As referenced, there's services that happen outside, including services at businesses to provide support, and a lot of the support that's referenced in the application is both citizenship preparation, college training preparation, and entry-level workforce skills. So adult ed really touches outside of the Adult Learning Center.
Any other trustee questions? Thank you. The recommendation, the administration recommends the trustees approve the grant application summary. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Hobbins, seconded by trustee Wake. Do we have any board discussion on the motion? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous, as all trustees present. That ends our new business portion. Our next agenda item is a board work session, in which the district council will present on trustee roles, responsibilities, and general rules of boardsmanship. This is just an information item. I don't know if the public is, they're welcome to stay, but there won't be any actions taken at this point, so. Ms. Kulliver is our district council. Do you want to come forward, or do you want to give people a minute to take a break and clear the room? So let's start this in about five minutes. Thanks.
Hey, Tyler, can you stay for just a second? I forgot to introduce Tyler Christensen. She's our new communications specialist, for those that haven't met Tyler.
Yes, I'm going to be talking fast, because I've got, I have a little bit of a time crunch, but we'll make it work.
What is your deadline, time-wise?
Realistically, at about eight fifteen.
And what time is it now?
About seven twenty.
Oh, wow.
We'll make it work. Go for it. Okay. All right. I can talk way too fast. Okay, so, welcome. Thank you, guys, for being willing to do this at the end of a board meeting. I know that it's hard to do these when we've been around, and I haven't met everyone here yet, because it's been a while since we've had an in-person board meeting. So I'm Elizabeth Kulliver, I'm the district's council. My nickname is Bea, so you'll hear everyone call me Bea, which is fine. It's nice to meet you all. We're going to talk tonight about some of the roles of the trustees, and the purpose of the meeting is to give all the trustees, but particularly newer trustees, kind of an understanding of why boards do things the way they do, and sometimes it seems a little bit different than how you would normally conduct business, but because that you are publicly elected officials in the state of Montana, there are particular rules that apply to you. So we're going to go through some of those tonight, and it's very informal, so if you have questions, please feel free to interrupt me. I'm kind of a low talker, so I'm sitting far enough away, so are you guys okay with me taking my mask off for this event? Okay. Okay, so historically, school boards exercising local control is not a new concept, frankly. It's been around forever. Montana's a little unique, though, in the sense that we have vested control, the supervision and control of schools, in locally elected boards of trustees. And if you look at the, actually, the history of the Constitutional Convention, when they were going through this idea of whether or not to include local control in trustees, as opposed to the Board of Public Ed, or as opposed to another entity like the Board of Public, or the Office of Public Instruction, there was a huge debate about whether or not it was appropriate to vest this much control in locally elected officials, because it really does shape the way the community delivers education to the students. And the delegates to the Constitutional Convention very firmly said, "This is what we want. We want these folks to be able to direct and control the schools under their jurisdiction." So again, in Montana, we're a little unique, because it's a constitutional provision. And then there are implementing statutes in the state that give us the authority to adopt rules and to enforce those rules, and also to deliver educational services to students in the district. One of the biggest issues that you're going to be faced with over your time as a trustee is, what is your role, and what are we supposed to be doing? That's actually fairly easy in Montana, because we have a statute that flat-out tells you what your role is. It's twenty-three-three-twenty-four, and it's the duties of trustees. And there are some big things, there's a lot of them, I'll tell you, but the ones that are going to come to your attention on a really regular basis, first of all, is hiring and firing. You can't delegate that responsibility to any administrator in the district. They make recommendations to you to hire and fire, but only the board of trustees can do so. Other HR tasks, like promoting, transferring people, assigning people, those things are all tasks that you have delegated. For those employees who are covered by a collective bargaining agreement, a lot of the terms and conditions of their employment, including how employees are assigned or reassigned or transferred, are generally contained in provisions found in that agreement. If you haven't seen it yet, it's not a bad idea to pick up a collective bargaining agreement. We have a lot of collective bargaining agreements, I will tell you. We have certified staff, multiple, and that's going to be the teachers. And then we have multiple different agreements for different classified staff members. So classified staff in Montana are all those folks working in schools whose positions do not require certification. So we have paraprofessionals, we have bus drivers, we have maintenance, cooks, all those folks fall under the classified, or the heading of classified staff, but they have different agreements. What you will probably see the majority of across your path, though, is the agreement that deals with your certified staff. That's going to be all of your teachers. You have other certified staff who are not covered by collective bargaining agreements, though. So that's going to be anyone else besides Rob, whose position requires certification. So your principals, your curriculum coordinators, your special ed folks, all of those people are required by Montana law to have certification, but they cannot be part of a collective bargaining agreement due to the fact that they are in a supervisory capacity. Except if you're in Butte, where the principals are actually collectively bargained. I don't think anywhere else in the state they do that. Other rights and responsibilities for you fall into broader categories. So for example, you have the right to adopt, and you actually have the obligation, to adopt a policy manual, in which you adopt policies that specifically outline what you want done in this district. How it gets done is the job of the administration, and that's where you see the, lots of handbooks that are in existence in this district, that explain how it's going to get done. And that's a good way to think about the distinction between what boards do and what administrators do. Boards adopt policies, they make rules, they give direction, they kind of give a roadmap to the trust, or to the administrators, to say, "This is what we want done in our district. Now you go do it." And the "go doing it" part is the handbooks. And the reason we have handbooks is that we are required by law to give notice to our students, our staff, and our community of what our rules are. It's a basic fundamental premise of due process, that someone knows what the rule is, so they can follow it. If they don't know what the rule is, there isn't going to be a whole lot of support for you trying to enforce that rule for them. You delegate a great deal of authority to how those things get done to your superintendent. And if you look at your board policy manual, there's a lot of policies in there that say, "The board will do this," and then one paragraph later, it says, "And the superintendent will develop a rule, the superintendent will develop a procedure or a process." The district has administrative procedures in place, that I'm sure trustees all have access to, if you want to see how it actually gets done. And those procedures are some things that can change pretty regularly. It's going to depend on circumstances. Board policy is very different, however. It requires this process, where we get together and meet and go through a different number of readings. There isn't a law that requires you to do a particular number of readings for a board policy, but the practice for most schools is to do at least one, possibly two readings, in order for there to be an opportunity for, not only for the public to comment, but for the trustees to think about what you're doing. There are going to be some times, though, that you adopt policies that you don't need to read twice. So if you're, for example, if you're making, if you're amending your Family Medical Leave Act policy based on a change to federal law, you don't need to read it twice. It's changing because the federal law changed, and it is what it is. But if you're changing a substantive policy with regard to student discipline, something that your community might be very interested in, or you might have a lot of input from administrators, you might give that more time, in order to make sure that you've received enough public comment, and give trustees a chance to think about it. You also approve a budget for the district, and that's a big process for trustees. And for those of you who haven't been through that process yet, it starts pretty early with trying to figure out, and school finance in Montana is one of the most complicated things. There are very few people in this state that understand it. Pat is one of them, which is definitely a blessing for you guys. Lance Melton at the School Boards Association is another one who knows how to budget and how to communicate what the needs of trustees are. But for you guys as trustees, generally what happens is that you're given a budget that's put together by your administrators in conjunction with your clerk, and it's a budget that, I don't say it's recycled every year, but the same categories exist year after year. And the question's going to be, though, is how do we spread the money that we get from the state across all of the categories that the board has determined are worth funding? And sometimes that means making really difficult decisions for trustees. Those meetings take place generally in the summer, because by law, we're required to have a budget adopted by the, I think it's the third week of August. So that's pretty much the major project for the trustees in the summer, is going through budget projections with Pat and making decisions. And it's been a while since the district has had to make some really difficult decisions about staff. I can't think of the last time we actually had to do a formal RIF because of lack of funds, but it happens. A RIF is a reduction in force, and that's when, frankly, you don't have enough money to cover everything in the district, and one of the biggest expenses that you have, between, anywhere between eighty and, I don't, what percentage are you guys at for staff salaries and benefits? Okay, so pretty much ninety percent of your budget goes to staff salaries and benefits, which means, when there needs to be a cut, unfortunately, it's people. And those are really difficult decisions, but that's one of the major functions of a board of trustees, is to make those big decisions, and then give your administrators the tools to go ahead and implement what you want done. The other big role for you, aside from adopting a budget, is recognizing what your role is as a public employer. Is anyone here a public employee, besides Rob? Well, Cone is, okay. You are, too? Okay. Public employment is different, and public employment in Montana is different than anywhere else. And then throw on top of that, you have collectively bargained public employees. They are the most protected employees that you can have. Montana is a pretty consistently employee-friendly state. So when we look at court decisions and statutes that deal with employment, particularly public employment in Montana, it's important for all of you to understand that, one, you are a public employer, which means you need to be at least vaguely familiar with the rules that go with that. And you need to understand the different types of employees that you have. And we've talked about certified and classified. You also have two statutory employees. One of them is your superintendent, and the other is your clerk. Every district in Montana is required to have a clerk, no matter what size you are. A district your size is also required to have multiple levels of administration, particularly a superintendent. Your superintendent is a statutory employee, because there's actually a statute that talks about the duties of a superintendent are, and based on the number of FTE you have, so full-time certified employees, dictates the number of administrators that you're required to have. So you make that distinction between your superintendent, your clerk, your certified staff, and your classified staff. The distinctions that you need to be aware of, a lot of them are based on contractual obligations, frankly. So for example, your superintendent is the only employee in the district, you can have a multi-year contract. He's going to have a contract that can go up to three years. You have to give him notice by February first of the last year of the contract, or it will automatically roll over pursuant to Montana law. Most districts keep a rolling three going with their superintendents, and that's mainly to keep them there, frankly. I think Missoula's pretty much always done that, haven't they? Or close to it? Rolling two or rolling three? Okay. Rob hasn't been here for too many rolls, so, but generally, in the past, we have done rolling threes. But that's up to the board to determine what you want that term of the contract to be. Other things in the contract are going to be set out pursuant to state statute in Montana, because he's what's known as a Title II employee, like your other classified employees. Their benefits are determined and set by statute in Montana. That means you can't give him more sickened vacation, even if you want to, and you can't give him less, even if you want to. He is entitled to certain benefits pursuant to Montana law. Same with your classified employees. Your clerk is also similar to Rob in the sense that she is a statutory, or he's a statutory employee. It's a capital C clerk, we call him. His job is unique, in the sense that he is, he's in charge of all your finances, he's also in charge of all of your records. You guys have a pretty unique situation, that you have a CPA slash lawyer clerk. That's pretty, that's a good find in Montana, to put it mildly. It's hard to find people that understand the duties of being a clerk, and particularly with an employer your size, with the budget you have, your accounting needs are pretty significant. So you have a really good thing going on here. Pat is also a Title II employee, which means his benefits are set out by contract. Pat is also a title-two employee, which means his benefits are set out by contract. But unlike Rob, whose contract can be up to three years, you guys have to appoint Pat annually, which means that during your reorganization meeting, which is gonna come honor before the third Saturday in May, you have to reappoint Pat. Realistically, Pat has a contract that runs from July first to June thirtieth. So if you were to tell him in May, "I don't think we're gonna keep you," it's gonna be an awkward six weeks while you hang out with Pat. But that doesn't necessarily happen very often, to be honest. The reality is if things are going down the drain with your clerk, you part ways in, in a, in a different fashion than dropping the bomb on them during your reorganizational meeting. But he's got a contract for one year. And then we have our, your certified staff, who are your teachers essentially. They also have contracts for one-year periods of time. However, under Montana law, when they have been offered and they've accepted their third consecutive, or their fourth consecutive contract, excuse me, they become what's known as tenured. A tenured public employee in Montana is a very protected employee. And we look to, um, we can look at case law in Montana, but mainly we look at arbitration decisions to give us some guidance to what their, that term of employment really looks like for them. They're covered by a collective bargain agreement that establishes the terms and conditions of their employment. It covers things like salary, it covers, um, sick leave. Uh, your certified staff don't get vacation because they work a set number of days, a hundred and eighty-seven days generally under Montana law. Other things that are covered in their contract have to do with discipline, have to do with, um, issues related to the renewal and non-renewal of their contracts. Um, and the other interesting thing about certified staff is they have a, an odd probationary period. In Montana, you, until you are tenured, you're considered a non-tenured teacher, which means you can be let go at the end of a contract year with or without cause. What that means is we don't have to have a, a great reason to let you go. As long as it's not a discriminatory category, it's gonna be upheld by an arbitrator or by the Human Rights Decision, or Commission. We've had several cases that have gone both to arbitration, not you guys, but, uh, other schools have gone either to arbitration or to the Human Rights Commission. And both arbitrators in the Human Rights Commission have said, "As long as it's not discriminatory in nature, the reason doesn't matter." So if I work here and I park in Rob's parking space three times in a row, and that's it for him, he says he's done with me, uh, he can do that. He can let me go. But if he says, "Oh, and by the way, you're a girl over the age of forty," then we have some discriminatory categories to talk about. It's been pretty well established, um, in Montana that that's the probationary period for teachers. There isn't a mechanism to extend that probation. So for example, if we had someone who we were really on the fence about, and it was the end of their third year, there isn't a way under Montana law to go and say, "We're gonna add another year of probation on to you, or we're gonna, in order for us not to terminate you, we want you to agree to another year probationary status." That doesn't work in Montana. We are unfortunately, we're in the position where we have to make that decision by that time. And then we have your classified staff members. They are everyone else essentially, whose position doesn't require certification. They all have contracts for a one-year period as well. Most of them are covered by a collective bargaining agreement, which means there is a, it's a cause provision built into that. The one thing the legislative session did, uh, the legislators did during this last session was change the definition of cause. We're looking at the Wrongful Discharge Act. So they added language in there, uh, not to make it easier to terminate employees, to be honest, but to give employers more direction about what are the conditions under which you can terminate someone's employment. Our employees though, the majority of them are covered by a collective bargaining agreement, which means there's a definition of cause in that agreement, or we just say "good cause," which arbitrators are gonna read as a pretty high standard, very much akin to what teachers are subject to when they are terminated, or when they are disciplined. Okay, any questions so far? And am I talking too fast for anyone to even understand me? Okay. Next thing I wanna talk to you about is the communication between, um, trustees and staff. And this is an area that's a little bit, um, it's always a little bit of a concern because we live in a community where a lot of us all know each other. And I'd be surprised if some, if all of you didn't know at least one staff member that works here. There is nothing in the law that says you can't communicate with people that work under you as trustees any way, shape, or form. But your board has adopted a policy, it's fifteen-twenty. It's the template policy that the School Boards Association puts out to try and, and help give trustees some guidance about what is appropriate communication with staff members. And what the policy says is that it, when we're talking about, um, communication in general, that the superintendent is the individual who's authorized to speak on behalf of the district. If individual staff members want to speak to trustees, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. However, if it's official business, it needs to run through the superintendent. Uh, and they flip that over, and the same thing goes. As a trustee, if you wanna talk to staff, absolutely, I guess, that's not a problem. But if you're talking about official business, again, it needs to run through the superintendent. The reason for that is that, particularly when we're talking about trustees talking to staff, is that everyone knows who you are. So if you walk into a building and you say to a building level secretary, "I would like this information," that person's probably gonna drop what they're doing and get it for you because they know who you are. They may have a ton of things they're supposed to be doing, but they're not gonna say no to you. So if you're looking for information that, in, in your capacity as a trustee, the request is that you go through the superintendent and let him work with that person's supervisor, whoever that may be, to determine the flow of work. Like, "How fast can we get this to you? Do we really need to drop what we're doing?" Or do we need to treat it like a public records request? And what goes along with that, which includes forms and a timeline? And again, going back to the other side, why is it important for staff not to go directly to you? Because the district has a uniform grievance procedure in place. It requires, and it mandates, due process for everyone. So if the, if a staff member is coming to you to complain about something, uh, they have an obligation to use the district's uniform grievance procedure to do so. And if they're coming to you, again, they're coming to you because you're a trustee. And I, I get it completely. It's human nature that if, if you want something done, it's not human nature to start at the bottom and work your way up. It's just not. Everyone, given the opportunity, would likely probably roll themselves right to the top of the line. But the reality is because we owe due process to all of our employees, um, we have an obligation to follow that procedure. In addition, for our collectively bargained employees, we have an obligation to follow procedures set out in the collective bargaining agreement. And to ensure that we're not trampling everyone's rights, we ask people to go through the superintendent to make sure, so that he can be sure, that we're following the due process protections that are set out in law. Your policy also contains language about visits to schools. And I know that you guys as a board do this frequently, where you go and tour new schools. Particularly when we were in our building phase, everyone wanted to sign up for the tours. It's actually not required for districts your size for trustees to walk through every single building. It is for smaller districts, uh, where trustees have to walk through every single building owned by the district each year. But your district does it as a way for, for you guys as trustees to see the conditions of the buildings, because facilities is also a large portion of what you will do as trustees. And you have to devote a fair amount of your, um, expendable cash, which there isn't a ton of, uh, towards maintaining those facilities. So that's the opportunity for you guys to see those. And then finally, with social interaction. They put this paragraph in there, so it's abundantly clear. There is nothing wrong with socializing with people who work in this district. Um, it's fine. There's just a request that again, if any official complaints or concerns, run them through the process that we have set up. This is also designed to help ensure that you guys as trustees aren't put in a position where someone's gonna raise a conflict of interest for you. So it's happened in the past where we've been to hearings and the attorney on the other side asks to pull the board. And as soon as they say that, I know exactly what's coming. They know that one of the individual trustees has spent a fair amount of time talking to someone about the case outside of the, of that room. So when we go into a hearing, you guys are required to be impartial trustees. And what that means is that there's an expectation that you're not having communications outside of a hearing process with parties to the complaint. So if the attorney's asking, they're, they know the answer probably already. So they're gonna ask all the trustees, "Who have you talked to and what have you talked about?" And if they believe that you have a conflict, they will ask you to recuse yourself. They can't force you to. You're publicly elected officials, and that's your call and yours only. The rest of the board can't even force you to do it. If however, you choose to stay after someone has raised a conflict issue and it goes through an arbitration, that'll be the first thing we have to talk about, is whether or not there's a conflict. And if the arbitrator determines that you had a conflict, and if there was a situation where your vote actually made a difference, um, it's very possible that'll be the reason that the whole thing gets kicked back, regardless of whether or not the district was correct in its decision, um, at the hearing itself. So what I ask you is to avoid the appearance of impropriety. So for example, if you know something is coming before the board in the form of a grievance. So if a parent is upset with something that happened to their kid in the school, and somehow it's making its way to the board, and they sit you down and they wanna give you an earful about what's going on, the best thing you can do for them is to tell them that if they want you to stay on the board to hear this, they need to, to not have this conversation right now. Because if they do, and you get questioned about it, the best course of action would be to recuse yourself from that hearing so you don't jeopardize the entire process. Again, no one can require you to do this. As publicly elected officials, this is your call. This sometime, yep, Cone?
So growing up, there were a lot more of these disciplinary things at the school board, and I've yet to see one.
I know.
Why is that?
Um, we have very few things that, that, Missoula in particular, has very few things that come to the board. The majority of the disciplinary issues that, that come up for Missoula are handled at the building level. I can't remember the last time we had an expulsion hearing. I think it was the, the individual who tried to set fire at Sentinel. That would've been eight years ago probably. It was after you left, but before. Was anyone on the board when we had that?
It was not. I think it was a gun.
Oh, it was a gun? Okay. Okay, it's been a while. We, we frankly, we don't have a lot of those, of those issues that come up. The things that, that are expulsion-level offenses in this district generally are handled by, um, students are, um, put into alternative placements, for example. So if we have a student who has, uh, engaged in, say they possession of, of narcotics at school, in some districts, that's gonna be an automatic expulsion. Uh, in Missoula, it's not always an automatic expulsion. In fact, more likely than not, it's gonna result in the student being placed in an, into a digital learning program or an online academy, um, as opposed to them being expelled. The only other, because expulsion is the only discipline thing that actually comes to the board, except for exclusion of a student from an extracurricular activity. And again, those, those happen. But exclusion, uh, it's undefined in Montana law. Most schools have that concept of it has to be more than twenty consecutive school days for it to rise to that level. And the way your drug and alcohol policy for extracurricular activities is, that's the first offense. And we don't get second offenses a whole lot. And if we do, generally, uh, the student, it's my understanding, the students have chosen not to go forward with the hearing. They drop out of the sport as opposed to the school.
I guess since we've interrupted you.
That's okay.
Can you be sure you cover executive session and?
Yes.
Privilege communications?
Yes. We're gonna get to open meeting law stuff in just a second. Um. Okay, we talked briefly. Any more questions about communications and stuff? Okay. We've talked briefly about policy, but it's, it's super important that you guys understand what the role of policy is in a district. A court will give a school district's policy the force and effect of law if it is legally adopted and consistently enforced. So when we have, for example, if the district were to adopt a zero tolerance drug and alcohol policy, and the community didn't like it, a court's not gonna overturn it. And in fact, they're gonna give you all the deference in the world as long as you legally adopted it and you are consistently enforcing it, because you have that authority under Montana law. It's a lot of authority when you think about it. You can really dictate how your community addresses educational issues throughout the school. I listed the policies in your one thousand section because the one thousand section is the policy that deals with trustees. It's, in fact, it's called Board of Trustees. Uh, you all should have a policy manual or access to it online. I'm not gonna kid you, board policy is one of the, um, less interesting things you might find yourselves doing as trustees. However, there are some that are gonna cross your path that you need to be aware of. I've listed the one thousand section that you need for those policies that are gonna come up for you. Twelve forty is the duties of individual trustees. Uh, it's not a bad idea to take a peek at that. And fourteen hundred, which is your meeting policy, and fourteen twenty, which is your school board meeting procedure. And the rest of my, I just strongly encourage you to take a peek through the one thousand section of your board policy manual. That leads us right into the concept of meetings, because you have a lot of information in that one thousand section about your school board meetings. And, um, every district does this a little bit differently, but Missoula's been pretty consistent for as long as I've been around. The board has always, uh, run fairly, um, formal meetings in the sense that Robert's Rules of Order is observed. Uh, there's an expectation that board members will, um, defer to the chair. Uh, she does run the meeting. We follow Robert's Rules of Order as a guide. It's not an absolute, but because you've chosen to follow it as a guide and, and the board's past practice, is that your meeting runs fairly efficiently in the sense that you have an agenda, you have, um, an order of business, and you stick to that unless there is a, a motion and a second, and everyone agrees, we're gonna change the order of business. The reason your meetings are run fairly, um, formally is because in Montana, school boards have a pretty big, um, obligation. And this is a constitutional obligation, and it has to do with what we call the open meeting law. Uh, the open meeting law is, um, it starts with our constitutional concept of the public has the right to know and the right to participate in the actions of government, including local school districts. Uh, that's the basic premise that we use for all of our meetings. And that means that the public has the right to know what's gonna be on your agenda, and they have the right to watch you and to observe you in your deliberations. And then if you're actually taking action on something, they have the right to participate. That right is not endless. There are limitations to it, which we'll talk about. But we have to read that right to know and that right to participate together because the Montana Supreme Court reads them together. And the, the general rule, the default, is it's open unless there is a reason for it not to be. There's two reasons for it not to be in Montana. The first one is attorney-client privilege, um, specifically when there's a litigation strategy exception, they call it. When we have litigation, uh, when, when we need to go into a, a meeting where I can talk to you and we are allowed to, um, exert an attorney-client privilege, and we're talking about litigation strategy, we can go into a closed session and we exclude the public from that meeting. When we go into that closed session, our clerk will always come with us because in every closed session, we are required to have minutes. Generally, your superintendent is present as well, and that's it. We don't do these very often because you guys haven't had a ton of litigation over the years. It's gonna come up this fall. I'm sure at some point, we will have a litigation strategy exception. What that means is I'm gonna be talking to you in a way that I would not talk, um, when the general public is around because I'm talking about attorney-client privileged issues. The whole point of executive session is that there is confidentiality. And what that means for everyone is that what we say in the room stays in the room. And what I've told people in the past is if that's not something that you can do, there is no shame in saying, "I'm gonna leave," or "I'm gonna, I'm gonna excuse myself," or "Recuse myself from this discussion." It comes up, and there have been circumstances where we've actually, um, required trustees to leave when they are member, or they are parties in the lawsuit against the district. It's pretty rare in Montana that that happens, but it has happened. And there have been other circumstances where, um, individuals, or trustees are related to somebody who's a party to the case, and they're not actually legally conflicted out, but they feel like it would be the appearance of impropriety certainly if they stayed, and it would put them in a bad position. So if for whatever reason, we are in a closed session and you don't believe you can maintain that confidentiality, I would strongly suggest that you talk to Diane and choose to leave. If you do, talk about something that we've talked about in a closed session, you are on your own breaching attorney-client privilege. You're outside the course and scope of your authority, and you're not covered by the district's liability insurance at that point. As trustees, you are really covered as far as your conduct as trustees. There's a statute in the state of Montana that specifically says that when you were acting in the course and scope of your authority as a trustee, the district has an obligation to indemnify you pursuant. What that means though is if you're outside the course and scope of your authority, there is no obligation. And the district's insurer isn't gonna volunteer to defend you should you be sued individually. It's rare in Montana this happens. I can think of maybe four or five occasions in my, it's my twenty-sixth year of doing this. One of them was a trustee who punched a superintendent in the face during a meeting, and then wanted the district's insurance carrier to represent him. That wasn't gonna happen. The other three were inappropriate relationships between trustees and students. Again, way outside the course and scope of your authority. The basic rule is if you haven't been directed or given the authority by the board as a whole, you're outside the course and scope of your authority. So if it feels even remotely weird to you, or you're wondering, "Am I outside?" Stop and, and find out. Talk to Diane, talk to Rob, talk to me, talk to anybody. Bounce something off someone before you do something that might put you personally in danger. But again, that is, it's super rare, and I'm not expecting it with any of you guys. It's just something that you need to be aware of. But again, that attorney-client, uh, privileged session is something that when it does happen, we're gonna talk about litigation. And we will, we don't make decisions generally in, in closed sessions, but your attorneys are gonna be giving you, um, information about what's going on in your case, and, and looking for guidance from the, from the board about how they would like to progress. The second way we can close board meetings is when there's an individual right of privacy. This is, um, pretty much understood. Anytime we're talking about a child, there's gonna be a finding that the child has a right of privacy. That's pretty well accepted. For staff members, they do have a right of privacy in their performance. So for example, when you're gonna do Rob's evaluation, he has a right of privacy, and he can choose to have that meeting closed. He can also, if he wanted to, choose to leave it open. It's completely up to him. So whoever's right of privacy it is that you're recognizing, it's also their right under Montana law to waive that right of under Montana law to waive that right of privacy. And if they do so, we're required to have the meeting in public. Where it gets really kind of sketchy is when you have, there are multiple parties to a discussion, and they have competing rights of privacy. So, the Seminole case in this in Montana was, it's called the City of Troy versus Goyan, and it was an issue with a police officer who was engaging in some inappropriate activity in his police car, and he got caught. And when they were having the meeting to terminate him, he wanted to leave the meeting open. The individual he was caught with wanted to assert a right of privacy, and they closed the meeting, because they were talking about inappropriate conduct, and it was sexual in nature, and they didn't want to have the conversation in public. There was a lawsuit that went all the way to the Montana Supreme Court, and that was the first time they said, "There can be competing rights of privacy." And when you have those competing rights, the presiding officer is going to be tasked with determining how you balance both of them. So in that case, the police officer should have been allowed to talk about himself and his conduct in an open session, and the other individual should have been permitted to speak to the, in that case, the city commission, I believe it was, in a closed session, because she maintains a reasonable expectation of privacy. Public employees in their position as public employees in Montana have a lesser expectation of privacy when it comes to misconduct, and that's one of the reasons. For example, we used to have more things that came to the board with regard to staff. We don't see a fair, we don't see a lot of that, to be honest, anymore, because when there is a finding, so if there's an investigation at the administrative level and it's determined that a staff member has engaged in misconduct, when that gets to the board level, the board chair is going to have to determine whether or not there is a reasonable expectation of privacy. And to do so, she's going to look at a whole line of Montana Supreme Court cases that have talked about staff misconduct in Montana, and we have a lot of them. The first one that was on record was in 1996, and unfortunately, it was me. It was the Whitefish School District. It was the first time, and for you guys who are fairly young, the internet was kind of new back then, and teachers were just starting to get computers with internet at their desks. And we had a teacher that was looking at porn pretty much all day, every day, apparently, from his desk, and he got caught, and he got fired, and the meeting was closed at the board level. And at that time, that was common. Anytime a teacher was terminated, those meetings were never open to the public. That case went to district court, and the district court determined at that point that a public employee who's not a police officer, which is where all these cases started, would have a lesser expectation of privacy if they hold a position of public trust. And that was the first time in Montana that we saw that doctrine of public trust applied to schoolteachers. And if you think about it, it makes sense. These people are taking care of our kids, and so there's an expectation that their behavior will conform to certain norms. After that case, we saw a whole slew of cases that came, a lot of them from billings, with staff members engaging in misconduct. Missoula had a couple of them too, though, several years ago. And the courts have very consistently put the burden on the board chair, and this is something that falls on you. You also get to make the determination whether or not a meeting is going to be closed in general. So, for example, the statute says that the presiding officer, and the presiding officer alone, has to make a finding that the individual right of privacy outweighs the public's right to know. So when we're talking about staff misconduct, she's going to be looking at it through that lens, and she's going to make the decision whether or not the meeting is open or closed. That's fairly well-known among staff members now, both certified and classified. So when we have issues of misconduct, if it's going to go to the board level, it's not uncommon for staff members to choose not to raise their grievance or their complaint to that level due to the fact that it likely would be held in public. But when we're talking about confidential issues in general, as board members, you will come into a fair amount of confidential information during hearings like these. So whether it be a student expulsion or an issue with a staff member, you may hear things like confidential medical information that are relevant to the student or staff member. You're going to hear things about people's families. You're going to hear things about other areas that are considered under Montana law to be fairly confidential information. And again, the expectation is, is if we talk about it in a closed session, we have an obligation to keep it quiet. The question comes up frequently, what happens if a student or parent leaves a closed session and talks? There's nothing we can do about that. The only thing we can control is our conduct, because we're the only ones that have any liability for actually going out and talking. The student and the parent aren't covered by the same rules that we are with regard to receipt of confidential information and how we choose to disperse that. Any questions about meetings or right of privacy stuff? Okay, when we're talking about the right to participate, it's somewhat of a, it's not well-known in Montana what this really means for school board meetings. The public doesn't have the right to interact with school boards in a way that a lot of folks think they do. What the statute, the implementing statute says is that the public has the right to comment prior to a board making a final decision on a substantive matter. So anything that you guys term as, for example, discussion items, there is no right of privacy. Or if you're going to be talking about something but not taking action on it, because you're going to, say, take action on it at a later date, no individual right to participate in that. However, that being said, your board historically has allowed the public to comment on agenda items in general, with the exception of things like the minutes and the warrants and things like that. That's not something, it's completely up to you whether or not you always have public comment on matters. You also have the right to control the public comment. And by that, I only mean that you can put time limits on it, and if someone is using either vulgar language or is generally looking at your policy, if they're making comments that are inherently personal or private, so if someone wanted to start talking about someone else's child, for example, Diane, as the board chair, has the authority to rule the person out of order and to stop them from speaking. Short of that, we generally allow people a certain amount of time to make public comment. There's two different kinds of comment on your board agendas. The first one is public comment on non-agenda items, and those have to be things that are of public nature and not in a contested case or any other adjudicatory matter. So what that means is if we have litigation going on, people cannot come up during public comment and make comments about it. That's statutorily prohibited. They can, however, talk to you about other things that might be on their mind. So if someone wants to stand up and spend their three minutes telling you what they think about the way you guys stripe your football field, they get their three minutes. They don't get three minutes per topic of issues that come to their brain. They get three minutes total per meeting. And as trustees, this has not been a problem for you guys. I can tell you about, it's going to go on 15, probably 15 or 18 almost years ago now. There used to be a couple trustees that would tap their pencil when people were talking, or yawn, or do things to indicate that they weren't interested in what that person was saying. We are on TV, I don't know if we're still on MCAT. We were just starting to go on MCAT at that time, and it was one of those things that people noticed. I mean, certainly, everyone who had to sit through the meeting, we all noticed, but the general public didn't. But then when we started being on TV, people started noticing it and saying that that was really noticeable. So one thing I would caution you is if you are prone to making faces or rolling your eyes, people are watching, and they do make comments about it. My mom used to always give me a bad time, because for whatever reason, for a long time, I sat where the camera was, and I'd be eating Swedish fish the whole time and guzzling Diet Mountain Dew, and she would constantly text me to see if I was having a diabetic coma by the end of it. So it's weird what people watch, so it's important for you guys to recognize that, and also to just to be aware of the fact that there's 11 of you. You're not always going to get along. You're not always going to see things the same way, but that's public school boards in the state of Montana. That's the whole point of a majority and a minority. And what we ask people to do is to recognize that when you are in the majority, be gracious, because you're not always going to be there. And if you're in the minority, recognize what that means. You're part of, you're a team, and sometimes your team goes a different direction than you want, and that's fine. But the whole concept of boardsmanship is that you recognize that you vocalize your opinion through the process of discussion and you vote. And at the end of that vote, once your board makes a decision, whether you agree with it or not, you don't undermine it. It's important for trustees to recognize that you will be at some point in your life as a trustee, you'll be on the minority side. Everyone always is. So when you're in the majority, treat those in the minority as you'd want to be treated. And when you're in the minority, please remember that no matter what the issue is, everyone feels strongly about certain things in their life, and that's great. However, when you are sitting on a board of publicly elected trustees, the board makes a decision, and that's the decision that goes forward. If you undermine your fellow trustees, chances are, you're going to be disenfranchising yourself from that group. And the best way that you can be effective in getting your point across is if you stay a part of that group and you stay a positive communicator. So, for example, if you guys make a decision and someone walks out of this room and says, "My fellow trustees are a bunch of idiots." You might be thinking that, frankly, but when you say it out loud, you tell everyone in the world, "We are a fractured board." There are lots of boards in the state of Montana that make decisions, and they're not unanimous decisions, but when the decision is made, the trustees get behind it. It's not a requirement by any means, it's a concept of boardsmanship. So I'm asking everyone to consider it, and then if you want to talk about what that means, we certainly can. Kind of speaks for itself, and it's hard, too, because, you know, people get on boards for a lot of different reasons, but a lot of times, it's because you feel very passionately about something. And if the board as a whole is not seeing things the same way you are, that's frustrating, and I know that's frustrating. But the best way, the most effective way, you can get people to understand your point of view and possibly win them over, frankly, is by not calling them idiots. So. Okay, we've talked about the meetings and the agenda. For the procedures themselves, you, as a double A school district, you're not uncommon in this sense, but things don't just get on a board agenda in the sense that someone can come into Rob's office and say, "I want to be on the next board meeting agenda." There's a process, it's an agenda-setting process, and pursuant to your board policies, as it stands right now, your board chair, your two vice chairs, and your superintendent meet and determine what's going to be on that agenda. The only things that are required to be on an agenda technically are those things that are specifically outlined by statutes. Every month, you have to approve your warrants. You know that. You have to approve your minutes from the prior meeting. That's statutorily required. Short of that, it's kind of what you guys as a group determine is going to be there. You guys have an agenda template, though. It's pretty clear of how things get there. What doesn't happen, though, is for someone just to walk in and say, "I want my issue on the agenda," and that's how it's going to work. The reason we don't do that, again, is that we have collectively bargained public employees. Nine times out of 10, what people want on the agenda are concerns or issues they have with staff, and while there is a process that will allow them to get to the board, you don't start with the board. We're required by our collective bargaining agreement and by our policy to do the old chain of command, and in this district, you have a very clear chain of command of how things can get to the board of trustees. But again, in Montana, not everything gets to the board. Diane?
Well, I guess I've always understood that two trustees could tell the chair they want, and essentially, if they're calling a special meeting, which of course, the chair will say, "Well, don't do that. Let's put it on the agenda." So it's always been my understanding that two trustees can independently contact the chair in writing, and then the chair is obligated to move that forward onto the agenda.
You're not obligated. In Missoula, that's been the practice, to avoid calling a special meeting, and part of the reason that started was, is there was a time when two trustees wanted something on the agenda, but they could not get enough quorum together. So the chair was very concerned that that was going to be demoralizing to the trustees. They couldn't even get a quorum of their folks to listen to it. So the practice has been, if two trustees really want something on the agenda and it doesn't interfere with the grievance procedures in any way, shape, or form, it would go on the agenda. Where we did deviate from that, I will tell you, is remember when we were buying Roosevelt's, or selling Roosevelt School, I believe, a million years ago? There were individual trustees that wanted that item on the agenda every single month, and there were more than one of them. So at that point, the chair said, "We're not going to keep having the same agenda item every month, even if two of you want it."
And then can you talk about motion to reconsider and who can bring something back?
Yep, okay, so I've got actually, on, God, they're all 28 and 29. My numbering system might have some issues. There is a portion here, we talk about Robert's Rules of Order and the things that you need to be aware of, and keep in mind that, again, we use Robert's Rules of Order as a guide. It is not intended for school boards, but it gives you a basic understanding of parliamentary procedure and what you guys need to do in order to run an efficient meeting. A motion to reconsider is a vote that can be considered, has to be in the same day or the day following the vote, by someone who voted on the prevailing side. Okay, since we don't have the option of the next day, because we have open meeting laws that require us to notice meetings up. So if there is, if we vote, say, as a board, you guys decide you're going to buy a new bus, and about 20 minutes later, someone on the prevailing, someone who voted for that has buyer's remorse, essentially, they could, during the meeting, ask the chair for permission to, essentially, to step out and ask for a motion to reconsider. So at that point, the chair is going to determine whether that's appropriate. So the first vote is whether or not it's going to be reconsidered, and the second vote is then the substance of the matter. But both, all of these are going to have to be approved by the majority of the trustees. That's a reconsider. A motion to rescind can come at a later meeting. So that could come, so you'd say, three months later, there's a motion to rescind the motion, the initial motion, to buy a bus. It's only going to be appropriate if you haven't actually entered into any kind of contractual relationship. If you already have started that process, you can't do a motion to rescind, because you're going to be in breach of contract. Where we see motions to rescind are frequently of things like, yes, we decided to buy something, but oh my gosh, our budget situation is not what we thought it was. But if you started into that contractual process, you won't have the ability to do a motion to rescind. The other types of things for Robert's Rules of Order that I've included are a motion to amend. Yep? No, you don't, under those circumstances. Yeah. Yep, yep. The reconsider is the only one that has the tight guideline of you have to be someone who voted in the prevailing side to get that. If not, if we, you know, we had unsuccessful, say, you had three trustees that voted against them, they could, one by one, keep asking for a motion to reconsider during the same meeting. So it's only designed to allow someone who voted in favor of it to bring it back to the group to consider. Anybody? Yes. And really, what happens is if someone, if someone comes to, say, Diane, and says, "I would like us to consider a motion to rescind the decision to buy the bus." Diane's going to know as board chair, "Well, we've already signed a contract, so we can't do a motion to rescind." So it's not even going to get on the agenda. The only way it gets on the agenda is if there's been no determination or no contractual discussions or obligations from the part of the district. They're pretty rare, to be honest. Most boards in Montana use Robert's Rules of Order as a guide. They fall back on the statutory obligations in Montana for trustees to follow general parliamentary procedure. What that means is that you have to have a motion. You're not actually required to have a second under Montana law or Robert's Rules of Order, but it's a practice of almost every board in the state. So you have a motion and a second, you have discussion, and you have a vote. Boards flip over where they do, do we have a discussion first and then a motion and a second, or do we have a motion and a second and a vote? Your practice, I believe, is the motion, the second, and the discussion. Is that correct? Most of the time? Okay. Yeah. There are going to be times that you need information before a motion can even be made, frankly, but generally, you follow Robert's Rules of Order pretty closely on that. Okay. I want to talk to you about trustee authority now, and we've kind of touched on this a little bit when we're talking about acting inside the course and scope of your authority. But the unique thing about trustees is you're kind of like legislators in the sense that you serve a legislative function for the school district. And like legislators, you only have authority when you are acting as a group. However, Montana has some pretty unique statutes that are applicable just to schools when they talk about the authority of school trustees, and it's very clear, again, that trustees only have authority when you are at a legally-called meeting and you are taking action as a group. So there has to be a quorum of you to make a decision. If less than a quorum show up for a meeting, there is no meeting, and you're required to disband. But assuming that you have a quorum, it's legally noticed meeting, you have a great deal of authority, not only under Montana law, but also under your board policies. If, however, you are acting without the approval or the direction of your board, you don't have any authority in Montana. So if you was a trustee, come into, say, the high school, and you want to give your thoughts about what you think about the coach. As a parent, like any other parent, you could certainly express some views, but again, keep in mind, everyone knows who you are. So when you walk into a building, you're not just a parent, you're also a trustee. So if you walk in and tell the building-level principal that you want to see that coach fired by the end of the day, or the principal's going to be packing his bags, you are way outside the course and scope of your authority, and whatever comes from that is going to be on you and you alone. The way we see trustees do that, it's almost always with really good intentions, is trustees is trustees offer suggestions to employees about how they can improve their performance, or things that they could do that would make the trustee happier. Again, people know who you are, so they, they do give you a little bit of deference, but I guarantee you, the second you leave, they pick up the phone and they call Rob and say, "I think a trustee just threatened me," or "I think a trustee just told me I had to do something, what do I do?" And it becomes a problem. So again, when in doubt, if you are concerned about whether or not you're going to step over a line, take a step back for one second and think about it, and say, "Do I need to pick up the phone and call someone and find out if I'm going over that line?" However, some of you have kids in this district, and there is absolutely nothing wrong with advocating as a parent. And there's never going to be a time when you're told as a trustee, you can't advocate as a parent. What we'd ask is that you just be careful not to use any kind of threatening tones or words that might make staff members extremely uncomfortable because of the position that you hold. The reality is individually, you can't do anything to them, because individually, you have no authority. But the perception, when a trustee is, is making comments or threats to a staff member is that they have some weight. So. Okay. We talked about public employment, last thing I want to talk to you about really quick is your email. And just reminding you guys, particularly when there's litigation going on, that you, you all have email addresses, I believe that are M C P S emails, okay? And it's great, I would strongly encourage you not to use your personal email for M C P S business, because when we get a request, for example, and we just fulfilled one the other day, when we need to produce all trustee emails, text messages, et cetera, et cetera, about a particular topic, I like being able to say with a straight face, the only email that we, that we have are the trustee emails. But keep in mind that all those emails that you send in and receive are, are not confidential in any way, shape, or form. So if you're using your M C P S email to do any kind of personal business, you need to be aware that's, that's, needs to be disclosed and is discoverable. So for example, we just turned over a ton of email the other day for a request, and there are some emails that, that are going to come up, that are, people are going to say, "Why, why is this an email? Why, why is a trustee using an email for this particular topic?" It's just something to be aware of, that we can't say that, "Oh, we're going to pull those out because we, we think it might embarrass someone." We're obligated to turn them over. If you have something that you want to put into an email, and you were doing it in your capacity as a trustee, please ask you to remember that it would be subject to disclosure. And there's a difference too between what's a public record and what's discoverable in a, in a lawsuit. So we can argue certain things aren't public records. So if you use, for example, your school district email to send your spouse an email and say, "What's for dinner?" I could legitimately argue that's not a public record email, it's not a matter of public concern. But if you're talking about something that's under the school district's jurisdiction, I don't have a choice. And it's going to come out. But even when we get a, a request for all trustee emails, and we've received those before, where it's super broad, I want, I want every email sent and received by the trustees using their district email addresses from this date to this date. We have to produce them all, no matter what's in there. And that's where things get a little share, kind of shaky. Also, be careful not to communicate, I mean, if you do communicate using your personal email, it opens up that door to us having to say, "We need to have someone review your personal email to determine whether or not there are any public record emails in there." So if you were using, for example, your personal email to communicate with Rob about district business, when we do a search of all the emails, that's going to come up, which is going to then trigger me having to say, "Hey, I need to, we need to do a search on your personal email." And we can break it down by terms and try to keep it limited, but it opens up your personal life in a way that you probably don't want open frankly, so. Text messaging is also something I would ask you guys to be careful with. Missoula City Commission had a problem with this several years ago, when they were sitting there texting during the meeting. And when you are a member of a board and you're having any communication, it's subject to disclosure. So if, if someone can see you on your phone, legitimately someone could say, "I'm asking you right now to preserve what you're on your phone, because I'm going to ask for a public record request on it." And it can be as simple as, "The meeting's running late, what's for dinner?" It doesn't make a difference, it's still going to necessarily be disclosed. So, I would strongly encourage you not to text during board meetings. And if you're communicating with each other via text, just keep in mind that again, it's not a public record if it's just two of you talking to each other, but is it discoverable in a lawsuit? Very possibly. So, I'm a firm believer, and if you got to, want to talk to someone, pick up the phone, have a, have a conversation with them, because any type of electronic communications that you engage in is subject to disclosure under certain circumstances. Okay, on that happy note, does anyone have anything else you want to talk about? Ricky?
I just have a, a quick question, going back to, uh, public comment on, on non-agenda items and the timeframe. So if, if, if one of, if, um, one of the public wants, wants to do, because we start off with, with open for public comment on non-agenda, and we kind of usually end it that way too? So does, if there was a public person who, his three minutes were up, and he didn't get to finish what he wanted to say at the beginning, is he able to come back at the end and follow up with what he didn't get to say?
Generally, yeah. Generally, no, you get one whack at it. So, there are circumstances where someone has asked, has said, "Oh my gosh, I forgot something," and they have not used up all their time, and the board chair has used her discretion to allow that person to finish up. But it's not intended for people to get two, three-minute slots of discussion. Con?
In the order of questions, motion, discussion, comment, vote, is any of that order required?
No, except the vote has to be last.
Okay.
Yeah, that, the only thing is you can, you can have that in any order. I have seen people raise arguments, though, that I think are fairly compelling, that asking the public to comment before they know what the issue is, isn't really fair. So you couldn't do public comment and then have the motion, the second, and the board discussion. So, if I had a preference, and it's not, it's not required, but I would do public comment after the motion and the second. You can do it before board discussion, or after board discussion, I don't care. But when I look at Montana's right to know and right to participate, if they don't know what the issue is, they're not going to be able to participate pursuant to the way the expectation sits in the Montana Constitution. So. Okay.
Follow-up on that, so, but knowing what the issue is, is the motion, not necessarily the board member's position on the motion?
Correct, it's the motion. So, I know boards that do the motion, the second, then they do public comment, then they do board discussion. They, the board members want to hear public comment before they discuss. But that's completely a preference for you guys, yes.
I had a question about, if we're, say, discussing an issue, and then there's public comment, and we're not supposed to interact with the public, but let's say it's a physician who then says, "Basketball players should have this diet," or something. What, there, is there a problem if and then your own discussion, you refer to that as new information?
No, not necessarily. So if someone raised a question essentially during public comment, and during the board discussion, the board attempted to answer that question essentially, that's fine. So, the whole, that, and that, this is a tough issue with public comment, because I think it's really frustrating when someone comes up and their public comment is they have questions, they don't understand something, and we have to say to them, "This is public comment, so thank you for your comment." I always would like to add, you know, an administrator will be available to, to help answer your questions for you. But public comment for, for public boards in the state of Montana is not a public forum. And they've made that abundantly clear through case law, that the public has the right to communicate with you in the form of public comment. There isn't the right to ask questions and get answers during a public meeting. So you're a meeting, you're a group that has to do your business in public, but you're not a public meeting in the sense that you turn yourself into a public forum where there's that expectation. But it's frustrating. And so it should be, like, I think Diane, you handled it great tonight by saying, "The answers to all those questions are actually in the board packet." And if you still have questions after you read that, someone will be able to answer those questions for you. So, yes.
In the vein of, like, the back and forth with the public, can you speak a little bit to back and forth with email regarding public comment? And public comment made to the whole board, made to individual board members, same comment sent to all board members, individuals responding, reply all, responding privately? Like, just sort of that whole stew?
And that's a mess, I'm not going to kid you. So, the, the whole concept of the open meeting law applies to electronic communications. So if someone sends the entire board an email, and then someone hits reply all and goes back and forth to that person, you're violating the open meeting law. You're having substantive discussions about a matter that's falling under the board's jurisdiction. At the same time, if someone sends a comment and they hear nothing back, they get kind of ticked off and say, "Not one of you could have lifted a finger and responded to me." So you have to find that way to communicate, that when you send a communication to the board as a whole, it will be considered communication in our board packet, but it's not going to, it's not going to merit a response from an individual board member. If an individual person sends you individually as a trustee, a, some kind of comment, you can respond to them. Just be aware that it's always going to be public record. It's not going to make its way into a board packet unless it's board communication as a whole. And when, you know, if it's, some districts have gotten to the point where, you know, people are asking questions that they don't feel comfortable just letting it hang, and say, "Well, come to the next board meeting and maybe you'll get your question answered." Frequently, the superintendent will say, "You know, if you'd like to, to call me, I think I can help you with these issues," or, "Here's the person, you know, this is the person you talked to." Those kind of non-substantive referrals are not an issue necessarily. It's when you get into the substance of an issue over email communications that, again, if it's a quorum of you and you're hearing, acting, or discussing board business, you're in violation of the open meeting law. Montana's super tight about this. It makes it hard to do business sometimes, but we are, the schools don't fare well when they don't follow the rule.
Can I ask, like, related to that? If someone were to ask you, "How will you behave in X Y Z meeting? How will you vote on X Y Z issue? How will you be?" Sort of pushing those points in a way that gets at, like, making a statement about something that is actually, like, what happens in the meeting happens in the meeting and is public. And, and, you know, speaking or making any references to what is going to be other than what appears in the public packet seems problematic.
I think so, and I think the bigger issue is that as trustees, you're required to make decisions based on information presented to you at the board meeting. If someone's asking you to tip your hand in advance, easiest thing you can say is, "I don't know. We, the board hasn't discussed this matter yet." Or if it's something that's been before the board before, and this is round two, and they want to know, "Are you going to vote the same way, or are you going to hold up?" This is going to come up with the mask stuff. Someone's going to say, "Masks are on your agenda on whatever date that is, how are you going to vote? I don't know. We need to wait and see when information is presented to the board at the meeting." And that is, that's what you're obligated by law to do. You're supposed to be making decisions based on information presented to you at your board meeting. It doesn't help, because people don't like those answers necessarily, but it is legitimate response. Okay. At the very end of this, I have a list of common terms, because there are so many acronyms that come up during school board business that it's crazy. And you're going to hear these, and I'm not expecting you to memorize them or anything like that, but you might want to take a peek at them, they'll kind of explain some definitions of stuff that's going to cross your path as a trustee. And so hopefully this will give you an idea of what it is we're talking about. So for example, I've got a definition of what, you know, A Y P is. What is collective bargaining? Why, why do we do things the way we do them? And if you're ever in doubt, or there's something that's come up and you're, you, you don't know, feel free to pick up the phone, you can call Diane, you can call Rob, you can call me. We can walk through these issues. There's no, no need for, as a trustee, for you to sit there for an extended period of time and say, "I wish I knew what we were talking about." Because it shouldn't be that way. It should be explained well enough to you, but sometimes everyone gets used to just using abbreviations or acronyms without recognizing that this isn't everyone's verbiage, so. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, sorry for the rush job.
That's okay. We have another agenda item that lets us talk after you leave. So thank you, Bea. It's always, it's a lot to, to learn, and we, we appreciate having it in writing as well. Then we have a second item under there A2, it's the board meeting communication, trustee participation discussion, and I wanted that there so we could discuss. There's a few things I wanted to point out. Make sure everybody signs that code of conduct that Tracy has, we, we're required to sign that. She got everybody? Thumbs up, good. We do follow Robert Rules of Order. However, there's some people who think that the chair shouldn't vote, but just because someday you'll all be board chair, you're an elected official, you have to vote. Board, school board chairs can't, can't decline to vote. Just get your old hand up there. I know I've, you know, I know there's some people who think Robert's is strict about that, but we're all elected, including myself, so I have to vote. We talk about abstaining, I guess, it's not that you're not allowed to abstain, we really discourage it. I mean, everybody's had to bite the bullet and make a decision, and, and everybody needs to, unless there's a specific reason. If it's a company that your spouse owns, if your spouse is an employee, like a certain type of employee, like a teacher, then you wouldn't want to be voting on the teacher contract. We used to have a trustee who worked for one of the major engineering firms in town, so during the construction phase, he abstained from a lot of those votes. But it needs to be a specific reason, but if it's simply because you don't know, you haven't figured it out yet, well then it's time for us to slow down and have more discussion. If you, if you really don't know, can't decide how to vote, let me know, and we'll, we'll keep working on it. I'm going to become kind of a, a watchdog about attendance. Attendance is really important. Attendance to school is mandatory, and so attendance to the meetings is real important. I know during COVID, some people weren't comfortable coming in. I, I, it's a risk of sounding mean, you, you can't not come in because you're concerned, because you're afraid, or because you, you know, you, you can't self-diagnose. You just need to come. And, you know, with exception of Jen, now Jen, for example, is under official quarantine. Also, because Jen lives up to Blackfoot Valley, represents City Swan High School, I would be pretty lenient about road conditions in her situation. But everyone else is pretty much in town, so although Zoom didn't used to be an option, you were either here or not, now they're set in between area, but I really encourage people not to try to zoom in unless they absolutely have to. And trustees are required to, if they don't attend, to give a reason they're not attending. And it used to be if you missed two meetings without a reason, you would be off the board. Well, that's hard to do now, because we have two meetings a month, that seems short to me. But if we go to three and four meetings without attending, you've got to really reassess why you're on the board and, and let someone else have that position. And I know we do a lot of routine things on the board, and so we're, we're working, I'm working with Rob to try to make sure there's some substantive items as well. Like, I felt this was a good agenda, we had the strategic plan, we had the graduation requirements, those are the beefier issues. We still have to do the, the everyday stuff. And sometimes policy is surprisingly beefy, whether, you know, first it seems routine, and then you're like, whoa, you know, that's, like, as Bea said, we're all but making law right there, so. We can talk, think about whether, what she said about getting public comment before, after the agenda, the motion, but before public, before we have a discussion, we could talk about that. So let me know if you have an opinion about that, if we should change that order up a little bit. And then, so that's all I had. Does there anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
It's mainly a question. I'm assuming that the board packets have all of the letters correspondence, and that those are available to the public, just as they are to us?
Yeah.
I went to the, you know, I went today to the link, and I assume that's opened.
And there's, and we actually have printed copies, like, if they were here, they could get one, yeah. Con?
There's a little lag right at the end, right? Like, sometimes the online one can have slightly more than the packet. Is that not right?
So, we, we actually print the packets on Friday. So if, if an online comment comes in on Monday, it's not going to be in the packet, but it'll be in the next packet. But we'll put it online, but it, it won't be printed until the next packet.
Tracy?
Oh, Tracy.
Anything else? Con?
So, question and one comment, or maybe idea. Question, so the, like, the grants, do we have to vote on each individual grant application separately? Is that a rule?
We set a dollar amount, right? We used to go down to like $5,000.
Yeah, it's anything over $5,000, and you do have to vote on them individually.
So we couldn't have lumped those two? Okay. Then my comment is, I guess I'm going back to the big COVID meeting last summer, where we had those four hours of comments, there was a lot of good stuff. And then we voted just like that, it felt really weird to me. It felt really disenfranchising, and I felt like I wanted to respond to some of the things that were said. So to me, having, go straight from the comment to the vote, just makes the comment feel unheard, I guess. And so, I, I just, a feeling I have, I guess.
And I have that feeling too, and I, I try, we try to get things on as an information item once, before they come on as an action item, but I sure get your point. Anything else?
Recently, you, didn't you at least one time recently say something like, "Is there any additional board discussion before we then add?" Maybe I'm wrong, did we do that after public comment at least once?
We could do that. We could do that. We could have, we're free to do that, right? Like, if we, most of the time, there's no public comment. But we could make it routine to ask for, for pub, to do the motion, the second and ask for public comment at that point. Then it would be routine and then the board discussion could incorporate what we heard in public comment or at least give us time to think about it?
You, you've also been making room for board comments and some amount of that back and forth before the motion too. Like, that, it seems as though you've made a little more space for that before the motion. Because that was, always used to be frustrating to me, is sort of the flip of that, is like, being asked for a motion before we'd had a chance to, like, uh.
Yeah, it was like playing Jeopardy. You had to, you had to form your comment in the form of a question because you were only allowed questions. So I've tried to loosen, loosen that up. Nancy?
Well, I, I would just agree with that. I think it's important to have the board discussion, the public can then make comment based on things that we've said and then we have a chance to rediscuss. And that would, I, I would hope make people feel more heard instead of they give public comment, then we just vote. I, I think it's, it's a little bit, I mean, just not only for, like, the information that we have going around the room, but for appearances sake, it's, I think it'd be better to have two opportunities for the board to discuss.
In cases where we have public comment, right? And I think we can check with Bea on that, right? So we, we could discuss, rediscover or discuss more after public comment?
Might the, the danger maybe be that we would end up discussing something that hadn't been noticed in some way? I feel like that's always kind of the caution with anything that feels like responding to public comment is that we don't wanna. Hadn't been given public notice of, like, so something that, like, I don't know. And if we're still dealing with the same motion, it shouldn't be an issue. But I feel like that's always why we've done it that way.
I think the chair would have to be vigilant about that. If, if we appear to be going off topic, we'd, we'd have to be vigilant. And everyone would have to be vigilant and remind the chair that, hey, that's off topic.
I just feel that's partly what she responded to, right? Is the motion is the thing, right? Now, if we amended the motion, that might get stickier. But I also feel like, and maybe I'm an offender because I do like to talk at meetings, but I feel like none of us are really abusing this or that we would, because the other concern is running till like midnight every time, right? Because people don't stop. But I feel we're not at risk of that, so.
Yeah, I think everybody gets pretty much to the point. And I'd like us to be kind of aware of what, what matters to each other, you know? We, we need to know, for example, what, what's interesting. Grace, if it's, if it's early childhood and Grace hasn't spoke up, we have to shake her, you know? You know, suicide prevention, you know, M T S P A. We, we all have certain interests. Mine's buildings. You know, so it's really good to know each other and know what each other is interested in and try to include that if we can. Try to draw it out if we can. So, Grace? Right. Right. I, I know that. I, I feel that. I think it's a good choice. And I know last November, we were talking about going, like, going to phase two or something. And the public comment, and there was a motion on the floor which I had made and the public comment was so strong that I actually withdrew the motion to allow someone to make a different motion. If you've made a motion, let's say I make a motion to adopt a mask agenda and clearly this isn't gonna go anywhere, I can withdraw that motion. So be aware of that too. You need, you need the motion to get the conversation going, but it can be withdrawn. You can amend it, you can amend someone else's. Yeah. And the people making the motion, the amendment doesn't have to be, don't have to be the person that made the first. Let's just all Robert's rules. We all learned it in 4H, right? But we, we can, we can work on it and we can work on, on this issue of where public comment falls versus board comment. Right. That was used pretty heavily when I first got on this board. I'll see. I think the calling for the question when other people still want to talk seem, is, is a very heavy-handed thing to do. I think if that's what you're, if that's what you mean. Right. And there has to be a second. Anything else? Jen? Hi. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm good. Thanks.
Yep. I think with that, then we're adjourned.